Hi, I'm Mary Wing Soares and this is It's Your Choice. Today with me are the candidates for town council. We have two open seats and we have four people running, our two incumbents and two new people to the political scene although Paul Skudlarik has run for political office before so we'll learn about that as he introduces himself and talks to us about himself and lets us know. I'd like to start with Deb Paul. We have Deb Paul, Paul Skudlarik, John Farrell and Tom Dolan. I keep looking down because it's not Smith. So, sorry. Deb, why don't you introduce yourself and let us know why you're running for town council?
Okay. My name is Deb Paul. I moved here 25 years ago from Riviera, Massachusetts, looking for a getaway. And when we discovered Londonderry, we thought it was the perfect blend of country and city life, so it wasn't so much of a shock for me because I had never seen a tick. I did not know what septic was and was like, why can't I do this? I didn't understand a lot of it. And, you know, we found a great home and we've been here ever since and I've been very involved in a lot of things. I ran because I felt I had a belly up to the bar because I always preach like races should be contested. I always preach that there should be turnover. Our president can only do eight years if they get elected twice and I believe this true, should be true of Congress, senate, govern, everything. I just believe that people should only be allowed to be in that position for no more than nine years.
Okay.
And I believe that because it brings a fresh perspective, a different look, new eyes and in the bigger picture, as our forefathers thought, Mr. Washington, President Washington, he felt that it limited corruption, nepotism, cronyism within government which you never want any one person to get too powerful. And I believe that and I believed that they were wise and that they knew that. So when I looked at who was running and I saw that there was an open seat, I decided to step forward.
Okay.
And the other thing I bring is, I don't want to be like Hillary, but I'm the only female. Haven't had a female since Kathy Wagon, which was a long time ago, so.
Paul.
Well, Mary, first of all, thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you and to engage with the other people running for this office. I've been in Londonderry since 2001. Prior to that, we lived in Hudson, New Hampshire. I'm from Pennsylvania originally and grew up in Pennsylvania, went to college at DC and then we've kind of stayed in New England for a long time, raised a couple of kids here, both of whom are gone now. They're not gone, permanently gone, but they're out of the house, let me put it that way, and doing and living their lives. So for me, I've always been involved in some way in politics. I've always been engaged to try to be as informed as I can be. I've always had a passion around, you know, small D democracy and democratic values and the maintenance of those values. You know, I've loved this community. It's been one that's given my kids a very good, strong education, very good background to begin, to begin their lives. I see a community that's got a tremendous amount going forward today but also has a tremendous amount of potential and a lot of growth ahead of it that needs to be managed in a proper way. And as Deb said, I think there's, I think there's a need, I firmly believe in participatory democracy. I think there's a need for people to be engaged. So I saw an opportunity here, as Deb did, to really step in to, these are two fine gentlemen, they do a great job, but I think it's important to have some turnover in these positions and to make sure we don't have the same faces and the same people involved, that we involve as many new people as possible to have a fair exchange of ideas and a wealth of different perspectives.
Thank you. John.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you for having us. You know, I married my wife 25 years ago here at St. Jude's. She grew up here in Londonderry, so you can say I believe in Londonderry because it's part of what we are as a family. So I was looking around and I found the reason I ran nine years ago. So it's pretty much the same reason today. I'm running for town council because I believe we need to be smart about managing change that will be coming. I believe that we needed to partner with those who helped develop our town that we can retain, which makes a community and so, and that so we can do it in a manner that assures the taxpayers are responsibly protected. Effective management of change, positive partnership for development, responsible management of spending, and that's why I'm running for town council. A few of the things I talk about here is where is the change coming? The airport extension road, Pettingill Road is now built. The sale of Woodmont, which is now nine years later really progressing. You know, developers go ahead and they can sell their land and do what they want to do with their land and being a, you know, a Dillon Rule state, we have to participate strongly to make sure it's developed in the way we would like to see. So why am I running one more time? Because it's almost done. And I believe experience counts and getting it done and then being done and moving on, knowing that you served your community for over 20 years and did a good job. So that's why I'm running, because I think it does count.
Thank you. Tom.
Thank you, Mary, for having this forum. It's good for the community to hear us together on a civil platform discussing our town's issues. Let me tell you a little bit about my background for those who don't know me that well and why I'm running. I was, I grew up, for the most part, in New Hampshire over in Hollis, went to Bishop Gerton High School from there and then went off to military via West Point and didn't return to New England till the early 80s. I relocated to Londonderry in 86, built a home here and I really have been here ever since with the absence of one year. I was down in Connecticut starting up a new company. I got involved back right at the start of this century, in fact, the year that the Twin Towers went down, 2001 was when I first got involved. And I was looking at the community that I had come to know and love and put kids in the schools and made my life here, my wife, that the town was starting to see some rapid growth without a lot of good planning, in my opinion. And also, we weren't paying attention to the financial aspects of the town, what's right for the financial planning of the town. And I didn't see a lot of good, no criticism of those who served in the past, serving as a noble cause regardless of what level you're in, whether you're an assistant coach somewhere or whether you're an elected official. But I didn't see the professional financial management skills that really needed to run the town. So that's when I got involved. And also, losing the quality of life. We had images and discussions about apartment buildings and the Mack orchards across the street from the studio we're in right now. And so we went about the business of preserving our apple orchards, preserving open space, protecting our wetlands, doing many things to actually slow down the growth, preserve our, preserve our quality of life. Unfortunately, as John had already mentioned, we lost Woodmont to that process. We weren't able to save it, but both of us had the choice of sitting on the sidelines and, I had left the council by then, sitting on the sidelines and wringing our hands saying, oh, this is terrible, we've lost this beautiful orchard to development. Or we could say, let's get involved and try to steer that development to something that would be acceptable to the community as much as we could. And that's why, you know, we both got involved at that time. John spent a career on the planning board trying to shape things and did a great job over there. So now that, now that I'm on the, on the council, I want to continue to do that. In the last five years, we've been able to drop the town tax rate. That's important, a good financial planning, making sure that we always use two filters when we make big decisions for the town. One is what's right for the town, first filter. Second filter is what's right for the taxpayers? Can we afford it? And we need to maintain those two filters. I'll get more into that later as we go, I don't want to take too much of the time.
All right. So knowing that, John, how many years have you been on the town council?
Nine.
Nine. And how many years have you been on the town council? I know you were on it, you took a break and, you know.
Well, my current tenure is nine years along with John and then I was on for six years prior to that.
And so when we talk about term limits, is that something that you all think is something important in our town? Or do you think that there's value in consistency of leadership? So I don't, I don't care who starts this conversation, I just want to.
Well, let's just level the playing field. Term limits are illegal in the state of New Hampshire.
Okay.
So in order to have term limits, you would have to have legislation to do that, just to set the ground table. So there are no term limits and they are illegal.
Right.
You've done more conceptually than I think. I think, for me, I've been somewhat ambivalent about term limits. I think there's a, there's a positive case to be made for both sides of it. I come down on the side that it's probably, for me anyway, I'm not a big advocate of term limits generally. I think that voters should really decide on who should be representing them. If that person they feel has the experience, the knowledge, all the things that they need to maintain the position, I think that they should be able to do that, continue to run. It's really up to people that are the ones being governed or the voters to decide whether or not that person's time is up. And those people that are then running to make, make the case, hopefully, you know, get into those positions.
So I understand because I had put a citizens petition forward to have a discussion about limits on boards and committees because I understood the voting process, you couldn't do it. And to me, it's more of an ethical, moral issue and keeping things fresh and changing and growing. And again, I'm going to reiterate, there is always that chance, you say, you know, they know what's going on, but people tend to vote by name recognition. And people tend to not really know what's going on until it's too late. And that's sad. It breaks my heart. It really does. And that's the reason I started a newspaper, is I wanted to educate and inform people. Whether I agree with them or not, doesn't matter. If that's what the majority wants, that's fine, but if we had a vigorous conversation and looked under every single rock and vetted the thing fully and that's what the masses wanted, then that's what it should be, whether I think it's a good idea or not. That's how I see government and how the world should operate. And so for me, it's not so much, you don't ever lose people like John Farrell or Tom Dolan, they're always there. As you said, you were watching, you would go to a meeting, you would voice your opinion. So that, that opinion comes with some validity and that new people on the board get to say, hmm, that's a good idea. And there's another conversation. So there you have more of an engagement. And to me, the more people you can engage, the better outcome there is for everybody. So in negotiation, there's what, two people walk away, not necessarily happy, but something gets done and hopefully it's the best thing.
My opinion on term limits is that it's a variable thought process. If you believe that the people who are incumbents are doing a bad job, you tend to be more in favor of term limits. If you think that they're doing a good job, you tend not to be. For example, my, my position on national politics is that I think there should be term limits for senators and congressmen. But I do recognize that it's going to require a constitutional amendment to get there. In the town, for example, if I thought that the town council was, or the school board was raising our tax rates without much thought for our taxpayers, I might be in favor of term limits at the local level too. So in this particular case on town council, let me speak to that, is that I think that we have a decreasing tax rate on the town side that goes to good performance. We have good industrial development that we've been focusing on, which helps to push down the residential tax rates so we can support the, some of the increasing costs in the other government. So I think the performance is there and so I, my feeling based on that rather narrow viewpoint about term limits is that what we have is a winning formula right now.
Right. So.
So it's interesting. So I joined the planning board with late 1999, 2000. And I thought I was going to go in and I was going to do all these things, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do that, you know, you're going to, you're going to fix things. About a year into it, I figured out how much I didn't know and how many rules there were. And about three or four years into it, I got comfortable and really started to understand how the process worked. You need to, there's a lot about learning how the process works and it's not easy, especially in this state. This state has a lot of rules that come down from the state that you have to understand. But I'm a little bit of a history buff. George Washington didn't run for another term because he didn't believe in kings. Franklin Roosevelt ran four times. The constitutional amendment didn't come until the 60s. But when Franklin Roosevelt ran, that's what the country needed at that time. So there's something to what Tom says. I don't know that I'm necessarily in favor of term limits at the congressional level. Probably more in favor of an age limit. We have an age limit for judges here in New Hampshire at 70. I think that's low. But I think that you get to a certain age in which you should probably be asking yourself the question, am I really still doing the same service I did 30 years ago? And that becomes a personal decision. But I think that those are some of the things that you have to look at.
So do you have an age in mind?
For what?
For that? You just said, you know, you'd prefer an age as opposed to a term.
What I would see probably from that standpoint is, is that, you know, today it's 65, 66 is what social security is at. I think once, and I think people, once you get above the age of 75, it's known that your, your mind deteriorates. If you get, you know, I mean, 80 would probably be my, my number if I had to pick a number because I think after 80, you should take care of yourself and your family and they should take care of you. You know, while there are many responsible people who served beyond that, I, I look at the Mormon church and they have, you know, someone leading the church who's in their 90s. Are they really the person leading the church? I mean, I don't know, but I'm fascinated with their religion because of how their belief system is set up. So, but, you know, you look at those things and you dig into the details, but I, you know, like, you know, I have, I have a neighbor that we look after who's 85 and he's sharp as a tack. But, you know, I can also remember, you know, my, you know, people I've known who are not. You know, and it's, but that would probably be my ballpark. I think that, you know.
And I'm just giving you a hard time, John, but don't tell that to Ruth Bader Ginsburg.
So it's interesting that you bring RBG up. My daughter's a big fan of RBG and everything. And I didn't really understand her writings until my daughter went to law school and then I started reading them. And I was like, she's a brilliant woman.
Yeah.
I mean, she's brilliant. And, you know, now you can understand why her and Scalia were friends. You may not agree with their politics, but they were brilliant.
Right.
In their own rights.
And I know it's an individual situation. It's, I know it's an individual situation. There are some people who should retire when they're, you know, 50. There's some people who should retire when they're 90 or 85 or 80 or whatever. So it's, it's an individual situation, but, you know, everybody's making very good points here as far as your ideas. And I understand it is, you know, in New Hampshire, there are no term limits, but speaking as you had said morally or just supposition, you know, your own, your own personal beliefs. So there's been some things that have been going on in town. There's a pool committee out there. There's, we're working on the common. There's a more article that has to do with the rail trail and that's quite a, a large bit of money. What are your thoughts on these things, I guess? I just want to throw out some topics and have you guys just start talking.
I would like to just make a point to clarification for people listening. When Tom talks about a tax rate, that you have to understand, the rate may stay down but the assessment of your house, you know, goes up. And so even though the rate is down, they're still collecting more money and that is why your bill gets larger. It doesn't necessarily, in other words, we have bills to pay and we have to collect that money at the end of the day. Whether your tax rate is higher or your assessment is lower, at the end of the day, there's a bottom nut they need to fill. And you can say it nicely, the tax rate's down and that looks pretty, but at the end of the day, you're still paying a substantial amount of money to, to your taxes.
But I would say though, everything's relative.
No, but I think people don't understand the connection of the two.
But if you look at, what you said is true, but if you look at us surrounding communities that we compete with, their tax rate is going up in addition to their assessments are going up. Ours, our tax rate's going down and some assessments are going up. So relatively speaking, we are, our tax rate comparatively is getting lower and lower compared to Derry and Hudson and Merrimack and these towns that are, that are similar to us. So again, we're in New Hampshire. There's no, there's no general taxes, which I'm in favor of keeping it that way. We call it the New Hampshire advantage. But the consequence of that, that we all understand, is we have high property taxes. But we can do whatever we can. When we, those buildings we put on Pettingill Road, each one of those big new companies is paying a million dollars approximately in property taxes to the town. That helps residential taxpayers not to pay as much as they're paying in Derry or whatever.
Well, it actually goes a little bit deeper than that. What it is, is it's, we need about a hundred million dollars to run the town. And around the town is school and town. So what's happened since 2010 is, is the amount of revenue, the assessed revenue on the residential side has stayed flat. The assessed revenue on the commercial side is up 60%. So now about $26 million or 26% of the tax bill is paid by commercial versus in 2010 was around 11%. So the reason that you haven't had fluctuation in your tax bill, and I don't really concern myself with the tax rates, about how much does it cost to run the town, right, has stayed close to flat. And that's the reason why. Now, this food processor who's coming to town and having been in chicken plants because of the software that I sell, they're extremely clean. They're unbelievably clean. He's going, that person's going, who runs that company is going to pay $500,000 a year. It's a half a percent of your tax bill. So, you know, so when you look at it and you say, what's important? Protect that core. Protect the middle of the town. Keep them on the outside. We can't stop them from coming, but we have to be able to control it. And we've hired a town manager who's good at it and he's doing a nice job. You know, he's the reason Pettingill Road got built. He pushed it. He had the contacts and the networks to make it happen. So it's all about continuing to keep that revenue going.
Yeah, I think there's a, the role of the town council, I think a big part of it is to have a certain vision for the town and to certainly manage the growth and to try to encourage growth in areas, certainly in the business level so you can kind of keep the property taxes as low, as low as possible. You also want to be able to continue to keep younger people around. We see this, this outflux, if you want to call it that, of younger people from this state and other states that are like it, where they're just not attracting the kinds of businesses and enough businesses to try to maintain, you know, a strong level of youthful employment, you know, throughout the town. So I think Londonderry has done a very, I think, a good job, quite frankly, in terms of attracting businesses, certainly the Pettingill Road scenario, the connector to the highway, was a huge, huge, you know, bonus for this, this town that allowed, that just opened up growth in a tremendous fashion. And Woodmont, Woodmont is going to provide some additional growth and that's all, that's all good stuff. But we have to continue to look at how do we kind of maintain the advantage we've got, continue to allow it to grow, to manage that growth in a reasonable way and then create a kind of a longer term vision for what is, what is the town going to look like 10 years from now, 20 years from now? Yeah, how do we interconnect the different neighborhoods within town in terms of ability to walk from, from a neighborhood and, you know, toward the schools or toward the center of town, which I still consider, you know, the Mammoth Road, you know, Pillsbury Road.
And always will be the center of town.
And will always be the center, in my mind, as well.
Yes, it will.
It's where it started.
And we need to make sure that that's a vigorous, attractive place for people to go. And right now, I don't think we're there yet. We still have a long way to go in that fashion, but, but I think certainly the, again, looking at that vision, trying to continue to mold it and having different voices be part of that is very important. It just, again, it's nothing about the people that have been there because they've done a good job. The people that stepped forward to actually run for these positions, there aren't a lot of people doing it. So, so the fact that we've had, the kind of stability we've had, I think is a positive thing, but again, it's, it's important to have additional voices to look at things in a different way and maybe mold the, the town differently and, you know, create the kind of attraction that we think this, this town can be for a long time.
Can I say something more about taxes? But I'll defer to Deb if you wanted to say something next.
No, no, I'm just listening. Bite my tongue.
The, one of the issues 15, 20 years ago when we started looking at preserving open space, it wasn't just about, it was very much about quality of life and maintaining the, the view shed we had, about driving through the apple orchard, seeing the blossoms in the spring and the apples in the summer. But it was more than that. And it goes back to what I was talking about, is strong financial management. We know that every child in the school is taking about, on average, $15,000 with the services out. You probably know better than me, but I'm saying that's probably a low, a low number. So if, so if you have a home with two school aged children in it, in the public school, that's $30,000 with the services that you're taking from the town that taxpayers have to pay in to get that 30,000 out. So we recognized early on that that math model is going to break the town as we attract more and more residential home construction. $30,000 here, another $30,000 there. And, and those $30,000 out payments are only being supplemented by maybe $8,000 or $9,000 of taxes being put in. I say only eight, that's a lot when you're paying it. But you can see the math that it's a negative. And too much of that type of development is going to cause the town to go broke or make the tax rate skyrocket. So it was important, when we think about preserving our apple orchards and other open spaces, it wasn't just about the quality of life, it was about financial management. Keeping those, those potential new homes to be built, putting school aged kids in the schools to keep them out of the schools and, and keep that open space the way it was and therefore not having to drive up our tax rate through the, through the school tax, school tax rate to pay for these additional children. So, so that's what I was talking about a little bit earlier about good, strong financial management, making that connection, doing the math to say, this type of development's going to cost us, this type of industrial development doesn't put kids in the school and pays generous tax bills to keep those homeowners' tax rates lower.
I, I do remember all of this and I was there.
Yeah.
I was part of the, the best school initiative and the first master plan in 2001 where you were there.
And the Best Towns Initiative?
And the Best Towns Initiative. I was there with you and I remember all of it. And it, it did echo out what we wanted and I think pushing that through was, was great. I mean, the, the fact and I remember, the thing that I remember most about you was, we're going to set the record, people are going to follow us as opposed to we worry about what the other towns are doing. We're going to do our own thing and, and, you know, what's right for us as opposed to, oh, what are they doing? Oh, we need to do what they're doing. And, and I believed in that. I, I always took that to heart, Tom, so just, I don't know. I guess I was praising you over there. You were kind of a mentor.
Keep it coming.
No, you were a mentor to me on that respect. And, and I think you and I had had conversation with 55 pluses. I personally do not have a fondness of segregation. I think that the elderly should be aware of the children and the children should engage with the elderly and then they don't have a hard time spending money on the kids because they see value in the children who are picking up the sticks in their yard and shoveling their, their sidewalks for them.
There's some merit to that argument, I agree.
And I just, but those are my opinions, it's, it's my personal thing, but I just wanted to compliment you on that because I do remember those days.
So it's interesting that you say that. I was at the Milford School deliberative session just a couple of weeks ago because we went over to look at these new electronic way of checking everybody in at the polls. And a guy came over and he says, you're from Londonderry, right? I was like, yeah. He says, we're doing this thing about the solar farms and everything, you know, what do you think about that? And talked a little about the solar farm that's going on over on Auburn Road. He says, well, we want to know, he says, because we think Londonderry leads the way. And I was like, what do you mean? Says, you guys are always out front. I didn't know this guy. It was just his kind of.
There is a solar farm first.
But it was interesting that that's an opinion of somebody who's 20 miles away.
Right.
So, you know, it's very interesting because in a lot of ways, and it's not by, some of it wasn't by design, some of it was like, we don't have a choice.
Right.
You know, you don't have a choice, you got to do it.
But when we, we sat down with the town manager, and we do that, do this every year, to establish his goals that he was, he's going to be graded on when we do his annual review, the last two years, he's gotten the same top number one goal and that's, go find more good, clean industrial development to help keep our residents' taxes low. And that's what we drive him to do and it's, he's doing it. He's paying off.
Yeah, he is. What, how, does he have a year contract, a yearly contract or is it a three-year contract? Do you know?
It's a multi-year contract. It can be, we've had them in the past, as short as two years, as, most frequently as three years, and we've had some as long as five years.
Well, I mean, not to get off topic, but how are you able to hire somebody for five years? Doesn't that, doesn't that encumber a future board?
Yeah, it, it, a last five-year contract was with the prior town manager and retrospect was probably a mistake.
Right.
There's an out clause in his contract.
That he can do it or you can do it?
That the, that the council can enact.
Okay. All right. Well, I mean, I, and I'm hoping that you don't because I think he's doing a fabulous job, but I just.
And then, yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I didn't wanna get, I didn't wanna get off topic on that. It just, you know, when you were saying, I, I, I think our town, our town manager's doing a really great job too, so I applaud you all for hiring him and keeping him, you know.
For the benefit of, of, of those new folks, and they're not really new, they're, they've been, been around and involved, both of them. The town council, when you think of it as a business environment, the town council is really like a board of directors to a business. And the town manager is more like the CEO, and then his staff, his senior staff is, are the vice presidents, if you will, without that title to the CEO. So it's, it's our job to make sure that we hire the best town manager, make sure that he is, or she is working on what needs to be worked for the, to the community, and also to have a staff that's responsive to the citizens, and I think we have that. I think we've got a great fire chief, a great police chief, and senior staff members. And that's not by accident. We didn't always have that.
Right. No, I know, I've, I've been here quite a while too, so.
Let's talk about something fun. Let's talk about the pool committee.
Yeah, let's talk about it.
Because it is sort of fun, because some, like other topics, like I remember the dog park and other things, someone brought forward, we should have a pool. Said, okay, form a committee and go do the research.
Whatever happened with the dog park, though?
You know what? It went over to Scott Benson, and then they never could come up with a piece of land that everybody could agree on. So it just kind of stopped.
And it had a lot of energy from Dottie Grover too, and when she passed, it kind of lost that energy.
Which the center is now named after.
That's right. So how, what are your opinions about the pool? Personally? Yes. I think we should have an auditorium before a pool. Thank you. You're done. Wow!
One pair of pants, two pockets.
I understand, but I think, I think the auditorium, you know, I personally would rather just even a bigger thing than that, a more of a civic center, teen center, maybe not run by the town, but on, an outside organization that serves many, many purposes, because we need a teen center desperately. The Y's working on one, but we need more than just what the Y can facilitate and a place for the kids to, to have shows and to express themselves, and maybe, you know, sell stuff in there to help fund it, and there's grant money and all kinds of foundation money that we can go after. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm, I'm in agreement with you on the auditorium. I think we're, we're a town that ought to have an auditorium. We've got, it's, it's a large enough town, it's got, there's a lot going on here. We need to find ways in which we can elevate what's happening and kind of expose it, and I think an auditorium has a lot of benefit to a town and.
You guys aren't just saying that to get on my good side, are you?
No, no.
No, because Mary knows.
The pool I don't know quite about. I, I don't know enough about that yet, what it would be involved with.
She knows. I was against the auditorium, but not the auditorium. I was against how you came to the, it. I wanted it to be more public and more public input. And other than that, that was the reason I was against it. I wanted to see a, a bigger vision, and that was why. Just so you know, I wasn't against the concept, I was against the process in which the concept was going through.
So it's interesting. I went on the school tours, and been on them several times. And I went on it this summer and everything. We started walking around the high school. And, you know, and having, my wife having taught there when it opened and everything, I started, you know, you started to remember with the wooden part of the, the high school. So other people started talking around town. It's just a conversation. And they're saying, geez, you know, we're gonna have to replace that part. And then someone else said, well, you know, we could do it at the same time. You could take down, you gotta take that wooden frame down, you've got the land out in the back of it. You've gotta come up with some sort of bundled bond, because then it's not really about one subject. Much like the police station and the, and the town hall and open space hall got done at the same time, because then you're reaching different constituencies and saying that, you know, if you do something in a bundle, then people are saying, there's people who want to improve that part of the high school. They may not agree with the auditorium, but they'll vote for it because they wanna do that part of the high school. And I think you have to come up with something like that. Salem did a really good job of that just recently in redoing all, all of their systems and everything. And I think it was a sixty-five million dollar bond or something like that, but they did a good job of explaining it. So when we went on the building tour, there were all of us standing there, there were some school board members and everything, and people talk about this functional capacity thing, which I looked up and it's like out of John Hopkins or something. I said, but you know what? Kind of explain it to people. I mean, because you gotta go out and you gotta tell them what it is, and you gotta be able to, you know, articulate why it's important. So back to the pool. We found out through a lot of the research already, all these pools, you say, all over the northeast and like crazy places, in Vermont and everything else, were all built by federal grant. You know, back in the seventies and the eighties. And, you know, and now they're, they're big to try to take care of.
Sure.
You know, and pools are pretty prevalent here in the community. But, you know, but again, if the people decide that they want it, it's gotta go to the voters. You know, the voters have gotta vote. If that's what they want, then they'll vote for it. But, you know, but it would cost us a lot more money than the people who have them already, because it got built for them.
Right.
Can you talk to the pool for a second?
Sure.
The, the council runs the risk sometimes of influencing people's thoughts too much. So in, we formed this pool committee. We want some independent thinking to come back to us and say, here's what we think it would cost, here's what we would like to put it, here's how we think we could sell it to the community, those types of ideas. We don't wanna stomp on that. But we, we also, as I mentioned earlier, those two filters, what's right for the community, what's right for the taxpayers. It's not hard to say that a, a pool would be right for the community. I can't think of anyone who wouldn't want to have a pool in the community.
Me!
But, well, you're thinking of balancing against an auditorium or whatever.
No, I'm not. I'm not thinking about balancing, but I'm not on the committee, so.
This one, I got one now. So, but the other thing is what's right for the taxpayers, and we're talking probably a multimillion dollar capital expense. Okay, so, but again, two filters. So John and I went back to Woodmont developers. And if, if you, if you remember, if you drive down past Market Basket going north towards Pillsbury Road, on the left-hand side, there's kind of a rudimentary lake over there, that in the master plan, they intend to develop that into a recreational venue. Probably dredging and so forth. So, so we put an idea in the pool, we didn't say no to the pool, we put in, we slipped an idea through the assistant town manager, who's a, who's a member of that committee. Said, why don't you bring this thought to them? That if we can get the Woodmont developers to develop a recreational outdoor swimming area, we'll, we'll even deliver the beach sand to make a beach, and people could go there and go swimming. I mean, it's not a pool, but it's, it's, it's part, part of the way there, and by the way, it wouldn't cost the town anything, never mind a multimillion dollar bond.
Except for the sand.
Except for the sand. In fact, we got some feedback back from Woodmont developers that they, then, they're not down with that, they're not, they're not throwing any shade on that idea. They think it's a good idea, and they'd pay for the sand too. So, so again, that's a, that's a way that we're trying to influence that decision, that development, and keep the cost of the taxpayers down.
Now, I went to a couple of those pool committee meetings, before they had them at three o'clock in the afternoon, which I can't do because I'm working. Most of the people there were for it, except for two, me and someone else who happened to show up. And they don't want just a pool, they want a complex, they want a splash pad, they want, all year, closed-in showers, they want the swim team to be there. So, I mean, granted, what you're saying is a wonderful idea, and I'm sure Woodmont would like that, but maybe more on a fishing, canoeing, paddling, sort of walk around the trail, you know, maybe ice skating in the winter, sort of idea. I just think that, you know, you, you're talking about a pool, but I brought up the fact that we have, the Y has a pool. Tony DiFrancesca was telling me that that pool was built, and that's why it was so expensive, with the fact that you can close it in and heat it, and it would, and there's a connection, that it could be year-round, and they would pick up most of the cost at the Y. And anything you go to, you're gonna have to have a membership.
Sure. And the, and the workout club has a nice pool, too.
Right, but they make you sign a full membership, even for the swim team. If you have a kid on the swim team, your whole family has to sign up for a membership in order to use the pool. Not when I, when my son was on the swim team. What they do now. Interesting.
So in Cheshire, Connecticut, they have one of these things. The walls move, the roof opens up and everything. It was like in excess of forty million dollars. It's the whole complex, and it's, I mean, it's beautiful. It's not what I, I know that's not what I'm looking for.
Right.
I mean, it's a, you kind of look for something that, you know, if they wanted to have a pool, that's great, but we're really talking about two months out of the year. And if that's what the community wants, so be it. But I don't see it as really being feasible.
Right. So, Tom, just to pick up on something that you said, as far as you're concerned sometimes, that maybe the town council influences the town. Isn't that your job? I mean, didn't we elect you to be our, you know, our, our eyes and ears as to what the best thing is for our town? I understand you all, you know, the town council puts everything on the ballot. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to be facetious or anything, because you really, I understand you believe that the townspeople are the people who should make the decisions. But on some things, that's why we elected you. We want you to make the decisions.
Very true. And so we walk a fine line between influencing and directing how things are gonna happen and also keeping the gate open enough, open enough to allow full, un, un, unrevealed comment to come to us. So we don't want people to say, well, I'm not gonna suggest that because I know the council will kill it. We don't, we don't wanna get to that point. There's also some statutory restrictions that we have, that we face. When we look at what business might be coming before the zoning board or business coming for the planning board, the council needs to step away from that. Our job ends with our appointment of board members, and for us to try to influence the decisions on the planning board or the zoning board is something that we try to be very careful to step away from, because it's, it's a quasi-judicial process.
Right. Well, I'm speaking, though, of the town itself, but the townspeople themselves. So, you know, there's twenty-seven Warren articles on the ballot this year. That's a lot, but, you know, and you all felt that it was valid to have every single one of them there. Especially, I, I wanna appreciate, I wanna tell you how much I appreciate the fact that you're using money we've already, you know, given you, given the town through our taxes, to, to pay for a lot of the things that you're, that are on the warrant. My question, I guess, would be, if things like the rail trail, or even, you know, any citizens' petitions that happen to be there having to do with money, if they didn't pass, that money would stay in the unassigned fund balance, would you return it back to the taxpayer as a, would you recommend that it get turned back to the taxpayer to go against our?
We, we did something like that last year. I'll let John talk to that, because he was, he was the catalyst for that.
In total, we returned one point, one point one million dollars to the taxpayers. So yes, I believe in returning the money back to the taxpayers. It, it, it's a balancing act. There, there's a, there's a, a neighboring town that four out of seven councilors make all the decisions, and all those articles don't go to the ballot.
Even bonds.
Even bonds. So, so in town meeting, you have the, the ability to argue those different positions of whether you wanted to hire more people or not. In this particular form of government, what it is, you know, shown to us is, is that the people want, want more participation, where they can participate at the ballot. So you want them to have the ability to make those decisions. Should we spend six million dollars on a fire department? The voters said yes.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, so, but.
Three thousand of those voters, excuse me, three thousand of those voters said yes, as opposed to the twenty-four thousand that could.
So the argument that moving from town meeting to SB two is, is that two-hundred-and-thirty-eight used to be able to make the decision, now three thousand make the decision. Hey, I wish more people would come to the polls, too.
Sure.
But, you know, but I can't control that piece. You can only give them the ability to be able to make that decision.
Let me just add in that, for the Warren articles, one of the things, we don't have to do this, but we do it out of respect for the, to the voters, is that we know that we're a personnel business. Our lion's share of our budget goes to pay people's salary and their benefits. So that being our biggest expense, if we're gonna add a person above the existing head count, a new police officer, a new building worker, we have a commitment to each other on the council, not that we have to, we have a commitment that we're gonna put that in front of the voters and say, you know that the budget is around people expenses. If we're gonna add more people, we're gonna get your permission first and not just do it and tell you it's in the budget, you gotta pay for it. And, and again, that's out of respect to the voters.
Well, and I appreciate that, but what if you need them, you know, yesterday, the election's not until, in the fiscal year, isn't until July first? So for me.
You can make that decision if it's absolutely in need. There's, there's, you can, that, you have that ability.
Of course you do, but that, but you, and so you're not finding yourself, and I'm not trying to exclude you guys, you're not finding yourself in a position where you, you have to, and you, still, you put it on the ballot and wait.
Because you try to be good fiscal planners.
Right, I understand that.
And that's really the reason for doing it, is you just try to be, you know, judicious with people's money. So we, we have new collective bargaining agreements, and the employees all agree to move to some sort of healthcare, you know, to a deductible plan. So part of that deductible plan is, is the town pays the deductible in full, so let's say it's fifteen hundred dollars, we pay the full deductible. Their rates go down, they put more money in their pocket and take more money home, yet they have the same coverage. Save the town a quarter of a million dollars, which gets returned to the taxpayers. That's the kind of fiscal management that you look for.
Okay, but is that on the ballot?
Union contracts went to the ballot.
Well, contracts.
And that's how it got done.
Yeah. Okay, John, you know, I didn't wanna exclude you guys, because these are.
No, you know, I think the idea of, of returning the money that's not spent, depending on how, how some of these Warren articles are voted up or down on, I think is an important one. I think people need to understand what's, what's at stake. And I think there's a certainly responsibility on the town management side of things to make sure that there's enough money there to, to take care of expenses that come up that we're, we're not expecting, that we're not anticipating, and to understand what the revenues look like going out longer, short-term and longer term. So there's certainly a balancing act, but we should always be looking at ways in which we should be able, we should be able to return money back to the taxpayers. There's no question about that. I think people are finding it more difficult to live these days, to, there, there's, expenses continue to, to rise for people in this town and certainly every other town in this state and beyond. And there's a real difficulty for younger people to have a home, to maintain, to have their own separate home away from their parents and not have to come back. But, you know, this idea of returning the money to the, to the, to the voters, I think, is an important one and, and one that everybody needs to participate in. We don't have enough people participating, quite frankly, in whether it's running for office or whether it's just showing up at, to the vote. I, I assume when we, on, on March twelfth, when people come out to vote, I don't know what the numbers will be, but it probably won't be very high, you know, relative to the number of people that could possibly be, be participating. And I think it's incumbent upon, you know, people sitting at these kinds of tables talking about this, to figure out ways in which we get more people involved in the process. You know, there's a general cynicism today about government at, at certainly local levels and then going into the federal level. But we have to think about, you know, how do we re-engage people, how do we make sure that they're, that they're, they're thinking about government ways in which they're doing positive things for them and not just opposing things on them. And also that we operate in a fact-based way, because there's, quite frankly, we've got an administration today that doesn't operate in that fashion. And that's what brings me oftentimes to, to be as involved as I am. I, I see a, a general cynicism, a certain lack of integrity. And we need to bring that back, and I think if people see more integrity in their, in their government, both the local, state, and federal levels, hopefully it'll bring more people into the process and they'll be more willing to participate.
Can I suggest a change in topic?
Just a second. I was just gonna echo something here.
Oh, go ahead.
I think the thing that, that makes it so decisive in government, especially in larger government, is labeling. The, the labeling needs to stop. It's, it, you know, a, a Democrat will come forward with an idea, and the Republicans will be, oh, those Democrats, and, or a Democrat will come in with an idea, oh, instead of just saying, what's the idea? Who cares who brings it forward? Who cares how it comes about? You know, it's the labeling that really needs to just disappear. You're a human being, no matter what you are, you're a human being, you came forward with a thought, and you put it forward. And, and that, to me, is, is one of the bigger things that needs to disappear.
Hey, stupid tip on you and Ronald Reagan aren't alive. They could sit these people down and say, hey.
Yeah, let's get it done.
I mean, you know?
But I do wanna say, all of these Warren articles, the ones that are dealing with the unreserved fund balance, or un.
Undesignated.
Undef, whatever. It was used to be undesignedated, now it's un.
Unassigned.
Assigned, thank you. So tomorrow it'll be something else. And that is giving the money back to the taxpayer, because those are one-time expenses and, and, you know, you don't have to raise the money, it's already raised. So that is a very positive thing that you all do, so, you know, I do appreciate that. We are just about out of time, so I wanted to give everybody an opportunity to, you know, wrap it up and, and ask for people's votes, encourage people to come out, March twelfth. Encourage people to come out March twelfth. The town council, in its wisdom, now are opening the, um, ballot, uh, the, the ballot booths from the polls from six AM until eight PM, uh, which is, you know, seriously wonderful, because we do have a lot of people that...
I think it's the longest in the state.
Yeah, we do have a lot of people that work far away from town, and so if they're able to come in at six o'clock and then get on their way to work, that I think we'll see an uptick maybe in some of those voters, but I just know I have to be there now at five.
It's a long day.
It's a long...
It's really cold early in the morning. We don't want them standing outside.
Yeah, I know. Well, I, I, I ran for office a, a few times myself and had many rainy, so, you know, uh, snowy days in my history being outside, so I can appreciate, you know, what you have to do, standing out there and, and, um, you know, I appreciate all of you for running. Thank you. Um, you know what? I started with Deb, so I'm gonna start with Tom, so that we'll go back the other way for, uh, good-bys.
Um, let's so, uh, as a wrap. I just wanted to change the subject for a minute, and what, what do we have for time? Great. But, um, one of the things that we all are wrestling with, it's in the media, is this opioid crisis. And we, I think we all take it very seriously. We're losing hundreds of our fellow residents that are dying every year now in New Hampshire. What, what you see on the news media is these prescription drug take-back days. It's typically across the country twice a year you can do this. The council, our current council expanded that from twice a year to twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. We'll take 'em back anytime. Three o'clock in the morning on, on Sunday night, we'll take 'em.
So, are people to go to the police station in order to...
Right. They go to the police station. They put 'em in like, like a, a mailbox you'd see at the, at the mail, at the post office. And, uh, but we went one step further, and, and this is the part I want to talk about. We've been experimenting, uh, without the legal protection from the state. We've been experimenting with, say, "All right, let's," the council said, along with the police chief, "Let's take back illegal drugs, too." So, moms and dads, when they're in the laundry room and they find that stuff in the pocket of the jeans and, and say, "What am I gonna do with this?" First of all, they're gonna have a conversation with, with the child, and, but then the question is, "What do I do with this? I have no option. There are no legal options in this state." You flush down the toilet? Bad option. Goes into the environment. You throw it in the trash? Bad option. Goes to transfer station and truck, barrel, environment. You throw it out the car window? Another bad option. There are no good...
The guy behind you stops, picks it up.
Right. There are no good options.
Has a nice day.
And that stuff being thrown out the window is being consumed by wildlife, and it's killing now.
Right, yeah.
So...
Of course not.
So, one of the things that we've been doing, we're taking that back in Londonderry, at risk, because we don't have legal protection to do that. So, uh, most of you know I was recently elected to, uh, as a state rep. So, I put in a bill that, uh, I'm asking, I, I hope, uh, most people will endorse, to allow it to be done statewide, to give parents, especially parents and friends, immunity from prosecution. Because you have this stuff you found, and you want to get rid of it, you're currently a potential felon for possession. And this happened through serendipity. So, give you immunity, get it turned in, no questions, no names taken. I think that's gonna do a lot to help get some of this awful poisonous substance off our street. So, I, I, I'm looking...
I applaud that.
Yeah, I do, too.
Yep.
Um, and knowing, though, that when you walk into the police station, you're under, uh, camera. It'll be interesting to see if people will still take advantage of that.
Well, interesting you say that. We've taken the camera out.
Okay. I don't know if that's a good idea, but that's okay. Better, do you want to, um, say, "Come vote for me"?
Come vote for me. Uh, I, I'm, I'm here. We have two newcomers to the process, uh, for, on the ballot. Uh, I'm here asking you for a vote for experience and to continue what you've been getting from me, uh, for another three years.
Um, Mary, thank you for doing this. Thank you all for participating. Um, it's been a very humbling privilege many times, serving this community. And you, you grow to have a deep love and passion for the people in the community, and, and you're surprised the number of times by the times, you know, questions that are asked, or people that call, or people that just need help. Um, we've been very fortunate from the standpoint that we're able to say nonpartisan, and I think that's important in a community like this. This is a great place, and there's, and it's made up of great people. So, I humbly ask for your vote on March twelfth.
Uh, I want to thank you again, Mary, for having this forum, and, uh, yeah, I, I'm, I'm kind of the outsider here in many respects. I'm not as well-known, certainly, as, as, as people around here, but I've, you know, I've been, uh...
Great baseball coach.
Thank you. Appreciate that. But, you know, I, I did, I coached baseball for a lot of years with my two boys and enjoyed that a lot. I love the town. It's a terrific town. Got tremendous potential, has a lot going for it today. Um, I, I just want to, again, participate at, at a little greater level. I've run for office now a couple of times, been unsuccessful, but I continue to, to kind of work at it and hopefully, you know, make myself more, you know, attractive to the voters. Um, I'm here to learn, too. I, I don't have all the answers. I don't come with an agenda. Uh, I come with, humbly to, to kind of, uh, approach this office in a way that is open to ideas, and, um, I asked the Londonderry voters for their vote, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb?
Thank you. Thank all of you. This has been fun. Actually, we should do more of this. Um, I wish they would do this for the council, like on a regular basis, to talk about subject matters. I think it would be wonderful for the people to see it.
Well, I do, yeah. I do interview, um, our town manager every month, but...
No, but I mean more of an engaging thing.
Sure, yeah.
Um, anyway, I, I threw my hat into the ring. I think that, you know, we're at a, at a po-, a pivotal point in this town that we're gonna hit a path, a fork in the road, and we either have to go right or left. And I think that the people that have been here have brought us to that point, and it's phenomenal job that they did. Um, if, if, if we need a new vision and, um, new perspective, and we need new eyes and new voices on the same subject matters, um, because I just feel that, uh, sometimes when you see something over and over, it's like proofreading. You can read the paragraph over and over and over again, and sometimes you just miss the spelling mistake. And that's why I think, even though everybody's done a great job, having new people look at what you've done can actually maybe find something that you just didn't see. Not because you did a bad job. I mean, you just see it so much that you can't see it. Um, and so, um, I hope that people get out and vote, whether they vote for me or anyone else. The fact that you're getting up off the couch and getting out and voting on a cold morning or afternoon is fantastic. And if you want to talk to me, please come to Coffee Berries on the twenty-third, uh, between ten and, uh, twelve.
Nice. Um, thank you all for joining me today. I really appreciate that all four of you are running. It's always better when we do have a choice. And, um, so I appreciate you coming. This has been Mary Wingsores, and it's your choice.